I will call the meeting to order. We still have one commissioner who is going to be here, but we do have a quorum. I'm going to ask you to stand for the invocation and then we'll have the pledge of allegiance. Remain standing, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all of your gifts to us on a daily basis. Father, you do so much for us as individuals, for us as a county, a state, and a nation. We thank you for the United States of America. Father, I thank you for those who offer themselves up for places of leadership. Bless this board, Father, and I pray that we, as members of the board, will individually seek your guidance in all decisions that we make. For it's in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Reeves will be here. In fact, he comes through the door. Mr. Kelly has been excused from -- for this meeting. The purpose of our meeting this afternoon is to consider the -- do they want to sound up? The purpose of the meeting is to hold two public hearings, one concerning the fire districts and the other concerning the budget for the county. Our first order of business, and I will wait just a few minutes, I believe some have come in who wish to speak. During the public hearing portion, and I will have two separate hearings, first of all for the fire districts. You will be limited to three minutes, and those who will speak, first I will take speaking for and then those against. concerning the fire district tax. I recognize those now who would speak in favor of it. I do not have any who have signed up to speak for or against the fire district tax. So I assume that there's no concern with those present concerning that. So I will close the public hearing concerning the fire districts. And the budget was submitted to the commission at our last meeting and recommended for approval by our fire advisory committee. So today, we can go ahead and approve that budget if you desire to do so as a commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the fire district budgets as they are presented.
All right, and I'd like to have a second to that.
Sir.
Move to second it. Any further discussion? If there are none, then those in favor of the budget say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. It's so ordered. I will now open the public hearing concerning the budget for the county of Lee for fiscal year 2008, 2009. I do not know whether you're for or against the budget, so I'm just going to go down the list. We do have five individuals who have signed up to speak, and the first one is Kay Ring from Haven.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for allowing me to come in this afternoon. It was my understanding that there were some questions about some statistics from this fiscal year and last fiscal year. With your permission, I have a spreadsheet here with five-year statistics that I would like to hand out to you. In 2002, the North Carolina Coalition Against Domestic Violence started collecting domestic violence homicides from across North Carolina. There have been at least 501 domestic violence-related homicides in North Carolina since January 1st of 2002. Eleven of those have been from Lee County, with North Carolina ranking 11th in this nation with the number of domestic violence homicides. When victims seek assistance from Haven, they are looking for several different things. They may be looking for shelter, they may be looking for advocacy, whether it be the law enforcement, hospitals, social services, or the community at home. When a person calls Haven and they're considering services, the main thing that we consider when we are talking to a victim is the safety of that victim. It is not uncommon for us to take Lee County citizens, transport them to another county or another state in the United States for safety reasons, just as we accept clients from other states and other counties within North Carolina. As of June 30th this year, excuse me, May 30th, we have assisted 500 clients. That's our numbers, with 52 of those being from outside of this county or outside of this state. But on the same token, we have sent just as many, if not more, Lee County citizens to other counties and to other states for safety reasons. There has been some questions about, do we track Sanford City citizens as opposed to Lee County citizens? We just assist victims. We ask them, what county are you from? What state are you from? We don't ask them, and we don't separate between city and county nor state. And our state and federal grants don't require that we track that, so traditionally, we have not done that. But if that is something this commission would like for us to start tracking, we absolutely can do that. Okay, there are 90 domestic violence safe houses across the state, and as I stated earlier, we take Lee County citizens and put them and place them in those. Part of what the state does on a state level is that we do network closely with individual shelters to ensure that all victims, whether they be men, women, or children, receive the safe housing that they need.
Time.
Thank you. I would like you all to consider our full request. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ring. Recognize Jay Kalindah.
Honorable Commissioners, you've already heard from me in the form of an email that I sent to you earlier. I just wanted to reiterate some of those points and put them into the public record. As a law enforcement veteran, as a veteran of the Iraq War, I came to really understand this principle that without security, there can be no solid, there can be no continued economic and social growth. And while that means different things in Iraq than it does here in Lee County, the principle still is true. I believe that it is the first duty of government to protect its citizens. It is the highest duty of government. It is, in terms of priority, it is number one. And so I was sad to read in the newspaper about how this board voted against the motion to add new uniformed deputies to the sheriff's office. I believe that Sheriff Carter's record speaks for itself. In two years, he's done more, far more than many expected, far more than many saw from his predecessor. People feel safer, the streets are cleaner as a result of what he's done, and he has asked you, the only recourse and the only place he can go for help, he has requested from you that his forces be more greatly numbered so that he can continue to do the job for which he was elected. I believe that it should be the priority of you, honorable commissioners, to support this work that Tracy is doing, to support this work that Sheriff Carter is doing in Lee County. I believe that you should prioritize these deputies to be added to the budget. It is your first priority, and I hope that you'll agree with me. Please fund the additional deputies. Thank you.
Mr. Jackson came back out first name.
Jeremy.
Jeremy.
Thank you for giving us time to step before you really quick. My name is Jeremy Jackson. I'm a local business owner. I've lived here 30 years now, this place I grew up at, and I've enjoyed seeing Tracy Carter be here. I've been around him many times, you know, he's done a lot. His record is amazing, you know, keep seeing his name come up, and it's all the benefits that he's added. He's made everybody feel a lot safer. You know, my entire family comes from the area as well. We sit and talk about what he's done and how happy we are about the things that he's accomplished. I mean, it's just, it's never like a derogatory statement. It's always something said with a smile and excitement that just comes about. And I've heard about the fact that he's looking for two more officers. I know there's guys out there that would love to have that job that can help him out to do the job that he was elected to do. So we've come for you also asking that, you know, that he gets what he needs to be able to support our county, to help it grow, to make it feel safer. And that's really all I've come to say. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Jeremy. Mr. Greg Cox.
I'm a little nervous here, so I've come before you before. I guess about 10 years ago, I started asking for help out in the county because of, you know, my fear was law enforcement was inadequately staffed, and I believe that Tracy Carter has done a good job over the last couple of years, obviously, that he's really proved himself. And I believe that we deserve to have those additional positions in the sheriff's department. I think there's only like four deputies on shift. They're covering like 30,000 people out in the county. You've got like 26,000 people in the city. I think there's 12, if I'm not mistaken, police officers on patrol each shift. So that's a huge difference there. I'm not saying that, you know, sheriff's department has different responsibilities, such as a jail, courthouse security, serving papers and stuff like that. So it's a different world somewhat than the police department, but I believe that the people out at the county deserve something similar. I think we've been behind for a long time. We've been kind of behind the eight ball. If he's got somebody else on vacation or calling sick, who's going to cover that? I mean, you could be down to one or two officers just like that. And I, you know, I've, in the past, this was under the previous administration, I made a call one night to the sheriff's department, and I was told there's no one available to answer my call. And I asked them, once that person, when someone becomes available, can they come out here? And I was offered no guarantee. And like I said, that was under the previous administration, but we're still not that far off. Tracy could get in that kind of trouble real quick if he had a lot of people sick or out on vacation or having to escort people to a mental hospital or whatever. So I just ask for your help. I've been asking since the late 90s. There's several people in here. I've talked to Ed, Robert Reeves, talked to Mr. Brown on the phone, Linda, who's my commissioner in my district. I just can't believe the help. I believe that Tracy deserves it, and the people in the county deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Robert Westbrook.
How's it going? My name's Robert Westbrook. I live in the county. I live in Commissioner Reeves' district. There's a lot of crime in that district. You know, I travel for multiple days at a time, leave my wife and kid at home. My wife's got a gun. You know, we got a few in the house. But there's no reason not to give our citizens the peace of mind to have these sheriff's deputies on the streets. You know, I call her late at night to make sure things are okay, not worried about what's happening in my area, in my home. And I want to know that if somebody breaks into my house when I'm away, that somebody's come. And right now, I feel secure. I don't feel that way. And you guys can make a decision to make that happen, and I ask that you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Westbrook. Those are the only ones who have signed up to speak, so I will now declare that the public hearing concerning the county budget fiscal year '08, '09 closed. We'll go now into discussion, questions, and comments from the commissioners. If you want to have a comment, then this will be in the formal workshop. Mr. Reeves, chairman of the finance committee.
I don't have it until I hear the other board members.
Okay, all right. Who wants to speak?
I have a question for you, Kay. Do you have the statistics on how many of your clients are foreign-born?
No, ma'am, not at all. I'll tell you, I do not. We do track those. We don't ask if they are documented or undocumented, but we do track those. I don't have those with me. As best I can recollect, 35 to 37 percent of our clients are foreign.
I guess my concern is, and one domestic violence incident in Lee County is too many in my opinion, and I commend you for what you do. Taxpayers of Lee County, you know, have a tremendous burden with all of the services they're providing now for foreign lords who aren't here legally. And my only concern is, you know, here's another situation where you're doing a great job, providing a great service, but, you know, should the taxpayers of Lee County be funding more of that? And that's something I'll need to find out from my, the taxpayers in my district. If you could get a statistics on that before Monday, I would like to know, I'd like to see the trend, you know, over the years, how that's increased and what the percentage is.
Okay, absolutely, I can do that. I will say this, that we do have an outreach coordinator that is Hispanic, and 100% of her funding comes from --
You ought to come to the podium.
Yes.
Yeah, so we can hear.
We do have a full-time Hispanic outreach coordinator, and 100% of her funding does come from other grant monies, from state and federal grant monies. The $10,000 that we are asking for is to help feed and shelter our clients. And I can absolutely get you the breakdown and the five-year trend. I do have five-year trends, and I can get those for you. I'm with that.
Well, I believe as far as the undocumented, you probably operate under the same rules as our health department and social services where you, and I think the federal government advocates that you not ask for documentation.
Exactly.
Any other questions, Kay?
Hey, there's no problem in tracking that, Kay?
Tracking if they're documented or undocumented?
Right. Any of the information, whether it be city, county, or?
Well, like I stated earlier, we historically have not tracked that.
Right.
But if that's something that is in our best interest, and it seems like that is something that's coming out, we can absolutely start tracking that. I know the numbers that I looked at today, we currently have a full house, 16 beds are currently being utilized and have been so for approximately two and a half weeks. We have a waiting list of three women.
That was my next question.
Three women and 10 children who are from the county. And I've started asking, are you in the city limits or are you outside of the city? So that is something that we can track, absolutely.
Well, technically, people that live in the city, if they're paying taxes at all, they pay both taxes.
Thank you so much.
Any other comments concerning the budget, questions, whatever? Do we have any recommendations from the finance committee, Mr. Reeves?
I should have received. You have the other notes.
Okay.
This is my notes, my office's.
Okay.
Y'all think all people that handle it all. You need nothing?
Yeah.
If you'll notice, the items on the coverage sheet, the first group are primarily items that Commissioner Kelly had an interest in getting backup information on this attached list. Set a minutes. I have not heard of any regarding this material.
Was this communicated to the people that were requesting this, that they needed to? Were they thinking that their deadline was today or maybe Monday?
I think everybody's, if you look at the attached, everybody has responded and it was sent out on Friday. The only one that came, I think came today, was the replacement vehicle for the fire marshal's office, even though there was some discussion, you know, later that I think in the committee meeting that, you know, that was all right.
Who did you fax? I know I got mine up on Friday.
Okay. These were all items that I went over with each department when I evaluated their budget.
What is the one here for general service, the hydraulic power? What kind of power tool?
It's in the tool you have now.
Installation for road signs, multi-use tool that could be used for grinding, timber cutting, and clearing, and also light demolition.
I'm a pick and shovel guy.
This is a high-powered pick.
I'm right.
This will help us keep workers' comp injuries to a minimum since the machine will be doing the work and not the employee. Sounds good.
Mr. Fire is here, if you want to ask him a question.
I've already read it.
Yeah. Well, I talked to you.
Oh, okay. Unless some of the board, other board members want to take the man to go through it, I have not heard from Commissioner Kelly, and I'm not interested in standing in the way of progress.
The overall capital was down quite a bit this year from last year, so I think the actual decrease was a little over $300,000. So I did not really think that the requests from the departments were excessive and what they asked for wasn't, you know, they were able to justify as needed.
I have no problem with any of those items either.
You mean leaving them in? Well, I feel, I kind of feel the same way. We received a budget from the county manager, and that was his recommendation. And I know that he and our finance officer worked hard to bring a budget in under the restraints that we gave him of holding the tax rate at 75 cents. So as far as I'm concerned, I'm happy with the recommended budget. I would say that if possibly we could maybe give some additional funds to Haven, because I understand they want to increase their bed capacity. Is that correct, Ms. Ring?
Yes, sir.
I'm not throwing, I'm not throwing out a figure.
We got a recommendation in here. I was just trying to cover these on the front here, the ones that Commissioner Kelly was interested in getting more information. If it's faxed to him, I haven't heard from him, I would move that they be approved, that are recommended by the county manager.
All right. Okay. Can you make a motion to that effect?
I do.
Right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. So ordered.
Okay.
You want to go through the rest of it?
Yes, sir. The next one is a recommendation to increase by $5,000, the Haven request.
And that's a recommendation from the?
Finance committee.
Finance committee. I hear motion that this recommendation be approved.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. So ordered.
The next one was a recommendation from Commissioner Shook, and it deals with the Lee County schools being allocated funds by purpose and function. And it was, it also included a movement of funds not to exceed 10% without commissioners' approval. That was unanimous vote to recommend to the full board. It's a move.
All right, motion on the floor. Have any discussion?
Uh, okay.
I have some.
Okay.
And I expressed it briefly the last meeting. I just do not think, maybe, that this is the time to do this. And that's my feelings.
I will say, last year being my first year as a commissioner, trying to understand I will say, last year being my first year as a commissioner, trying to understand or put any understanding in where the money was really going and looking at the budget format last year and the way it came to us originally this year. And then when John parsed it out and gave us the spreadsheet that showed us where things were going, that was a real eye-opener. Especially when you take a look at some areas that, you know, really aren't classroom-related, where there's been a balloon of expenditures. So we're not the only county that would be doing this. And I just think that, you know, we need to be able to know where that funding is going. And I further add to that, this printout, I don't know that we have one for 2007, 2008, but this was just the Lee County Schools administration, the cost for administrators and what's locally funded. And this just includes salaries, supplements, doesn't include medical and health insurance, doesn't include retirement. But the local funding, what the taxpayers here are funding over and above what the state says we need, $40 million. And I think at some point, you know, we just really need to take a look at things by purpose and function. We're required by law to provide the buildings and the current operating expense. I think over the years, the current operating expense has morphed into something a whole lot than current operating expense. It's my feeling.
Mr. Trump, how many counties and states have this?
Well, the, the report we got from the association said 11 and I contacted three that had been doing purpose and function, but were no longer doing it. So it was down to eight. Wake County just announced, just passed their budget, so that made nine. And then I sent a message out on the listserv and there were several counties that said no to purpose and function, but had some type of modified agreement between the school boards and the board of commissioners, such as, you know, they didn't purpose and function all items, but did, like Cabarrus County purposed and functioned operational support services because they were concerned about how much money was being spent on maintenance at the schools. So they came into an agreement with the school board that, you know, they would line up, basically line item that amount and the rest of the money that they gave them would be at the discretion of the school board. So there are some hybrid, you know, deals across the state. So, you know, all in all, I'd say there's about 15 to 16 that have some type of agreement, one way or another, that, that restricts by purpose and function of budgets.
They just don't, don't call it that.
They don't call it that because they're not, they're not doing their entire budget that way.
John, you were, of that spreadsheet you compiled for us, you were going to identify, I think you said there were eight items that were, that we were mandated?
We, we were able to pull some of those items out. And the current expense budget for custodians, maintenance, operation of plant utilities, custodial maintenance support services and operations of telephones and some other things, came up to about 5.5 million of the 16 million that they requested. So we had to add a few more costs in there, such as the liability insurance and that kind of thing. We still get back up to that one-third or a little bit more than one-third goes to what is statutorily required of the county. But, you know, there's some, some discussion about some of those other expenditures that the, that the county pays for as to whether they're required or not based on the lawsuit that was recently determined in Beaufort County. You know, with some discretion used by the courts. And they think they ruled, you know, that those eight items, that there could be an agreement on the amount above that. And then historically, if funds had been provided for those other things, then the county was obligated to continue. So, but, you know, just in those statutorily required items. So the county does contribute quite a bit to the other instructional services of the, of the county. Left them, left the Board of Education out, so.
I think that it's safe to say that the committee as a whole actually agrees on the concept. I expressed my concern about the timing when we voted and I told Commissioner Shook that in advance. I still feel that way today. I think for the most part, we ought to try and have a meeting of the minds and at least hear why perhaps we should not move in that direction from the school board.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
And the timing and the fact that this came up recently. We haven't had, the school board has not had a chance to, to consider it or make any comments. And I think it's, it's a direction that we need to move in, but I just, I don't think I can support it this year.
I feel far more comfortable allowing or at least putting on notice that this is a consideration along with the hybrids that are out there that we may be moving toward in the coming year.
You want to withdraw your motion?
I don't have one. I had one from the committee to the board. And if the likes of Commissioner Shook, if she wants to withdraw, that's fine with me. If not, we'll put any motion on the table.
I want to leave it as it is. I, I think that, you know, the first year can be a transition year and we can work together, you know, with the Board of Education to work this out. But I think the sooner we get this in here and the expectations there, you know, Wake County Commissioners just really cut 300 and some million out of the Wake County Board of Education. We're dropping the bucket compared to them, but... But they're going to have to make some cuts, the, the Board of Education there. And I think that, you know, just in administrative salaries here, you know, I think it's, it's hard to justify that when we desperately need two more patrol deputies.
Well, according to Wake, they, they made their move because they simply don't have the money and they're asking to reconsider various things like cutting out programs, new programs, and they're working in that vein. But it doesn't matter what department or what branch of government it is, if the money isn't there, it just isn't there. So trying to force it is not necessarily the best way to go about it. I again will tell you that for, for my vote, it is just not a good time. We've got too many different things on the table. There's enough controversy going on about how we're going to make ends meet without getting into an internal battle with an additional battle with the Board of Education. I like the idea of having it out there, that it is a thought, it is a consideration, but I'm not going to move to cram it down the throats. So it's your call if you want to...
All right, the, the finance committee has made a recommendation that, that the function and purpose be initiated this year. Do I hear a motion that we accept their recommendation?
Well, I, I would say, Mr. Chair, that as Chair of Finance, I withdraw the motion and Commissioner Shook can raise her own motion. As a member of the board, I withdraw the one from the finance committee.
Do you hear a motion that, that we institute that this year?
Here's my thoughts on that. I would say that starting July 1st, that become our policy for the next school year as the budget comes in, that they start to transition to this and that we have a dialogue to know what the purpose and function is. I also made a motion in that finance committee that we reduce the amount that county manager proposed for the schools by $100,000. And that would fund the two deputies that we need. There's some, also some other areas in there. So I guess the motion that I would like to make is, you know, to propose to fund the school $100,000 less than what John had recommended. And then as we move forward, we get this system set up so that it is by purpose and function.
Would that bait to come in the following budget?
Well, it means that...
Next year, by year.
That they'll start to have to start tracking, you know, where their budget versus actual, where they're actually spending this and to be able to work with them so they know what the, the budget and function areas are. And then that way, we'll be able to see at the end of that. But, you know, when they present their budget next year, it's done by purpose and function.
Mr. Chairman, I think, I think if we want to pay closer attention to where they're spending the money, we're allowed by statute to, to ask the Board of Education's finance director to give us a financial report periodically, you know, either monthly or quarterly or however you want to get it. I think if we're going to try to transition, you know, you, you might want to include in a motion that they begin providing us a quarterly financial statement on their year-to-date finances as we're going through the year.
You're either going to do it or you're not going to do it. And the way the motion is worded, I, I don't know what you're asking for.
I want to be able to, to know where the money's going and where the big, you know, expense balloon items are going. And I want to be able to know what over and above, you know, what the state mandates that we pay, we're paying. And I think the taxpayers want to know that too. So whatever the best way is for us to track that and monitor it, that's my recommendation.
Well, again, I'm, I don't feel that the approach you're offering is the best way at this time. Either way you look at it, whether it's the motion that was in finance or the motion you're making now, it's still a forced transition. And it still doesn't allow for the preliminary discussions before we make a final decision. In addition to that, and, and I'll be the first to say, I supported you on the $100,000 reduction to hear more about what it is you have in mind. But if it is to penalize them and give it to the sheriff's department, then obviously I'm going to vote against that.
Well, I was going to...
It's not to penalize, I just think there's probably a lot more than $100,000.
I'm telling you that, that's what you just said. You said you want to give $100,000 to the sheriff's department. And I said, if that's what you're doing, then no, I'm not going to support that. So I'm saying...
Well, I also submit some other items here that I thought could be reduced, so...
And I vote against them too.
All right, we have a motion on the floor and that motion does include the reduction of $100,000 from the school system and to be used for the sheriff's department. And also, the motion is that we partially or whatever, go to the purpose and funding, or funding and purpose. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure what the motion is.
I'm not sure what the motion is either.
Well, that's what you said.
It's your motion, huh? Because I'm not sure what...
Read it back.
The school's $100,000 less. County manager's recommended budget.
If we break that up into two motions, it really should be two motions. One is for the reduced funding.
It's two completely separate issues there.
All right, what kind of motion you want to make?
I want to make a motion that we transition over to a school budget process where it's by item and, and function and that we have dialogue and communication with the school board to transition into this, not necessarily expecting them, obviously with this budget they present us now, to do it. But that in the next year, we begin to transition into this.
What does begin the transition now?
Means that John gives us a recommendation.
You either do it or you don't.
Yeah, are you saying by next year?
She's, she's not saying in this year's budget ordinance. She's saying in '09, 2010 budget ordinance or when I present the budget for next year, it will be by purpose and function.
She's saying, we're going to purpose and function in '09 period.
That's it.
Talk about it along the way if you choose to, but we're going there period is what you're saying. That's your motion. That's what I am not supporting. I'm simply saying, we go to the table, we talk about it, we at least put them on notice today that we are considering that thought, that that's what we may go to. But to simply say that we're going to automatically go to it in '09 is the equivalent of doing it today and just saying, it's over with, no discussion. There's no sense in discussing if you're going to go ahead and do it in '09.
Well, and, and the new board that's coming on...
It's the equivalent of saying, I'm going to apologize after I slap you, but I'm going to slap you now. You get the apology later.
You know, I, I think we've all had the conversations that we just really need to, with our financial responsibility or our fiduciary responsibility for how the tax laws are being spent right now, the way that the budgets from the schools have been presented before, it's just impossible. And it's, it's been impossible for us to see what we've been, what we're mandated by the state to pay for and what's not because they move funds from one thing to another probably and it, I, I couldn't understand last year's budget. This year made a lot of sense when it was parsed down by item and function. And that's the only way that I feel like in...
We actually got a line item budget from them and were able to break it down.
With funds, without restricting.
Which is at least a move in the right direction.
Right.
And didn't create a horrendous fight. We made a request, they seemed to have honored it when, when it was made. To now come back and say cooperate it and because you have, I'm going to further penalize you is not, in my opinion, the way we ought to do business. They're not our adversaries. We really ought to try to work with them and I hope they'll try and work with us.
As I, as I stated in our last meeting, they are an elected board and they're accountable to the citizens and all of them.
Well, they can maybe go further too.
Yeah. All right, the motion is what?
Well, it's, it's amazing how this has changed from the finance committee's discussion...
Just make a, make a motion on what you want us to vote on. I think where we're getting lost is you're adding too much to it.
I make a motion that when it comes to the school budget, that we move to an item and function budget so we can better monitor how the monies are being spent.
All right.
Begin.
All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
Vote is five to one, one member absent. Okay, now, the other motion for the $100,000 loss.
I make a motion that we, from Mr. Crump's, proposed funding for the schools, that we reduce that by $100,000 to cover some other things that I think are maybe just as important.
Any discussion? All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
I have a question.
Okay.
Who wouldn't you get the $100, $100,000 taken away?
I probably could have picked a whole lot more.
Why'd you pick $100,000?
Why did I pick $100,000? Because I came up with a list of, of things I felt could be cut in order to properly fund our public safety needs.
And those were two, the two deputies, right?
$99,000 would add the two deputies.
But you got $276,000 in cash.
I know, I'm giving you guys lots to choose from.
So we're going to make individual motions on each of these?
No.
Well, I, no. I still feel that we need to reduce that school budget by $100,000.
All right, any further questions? All those in favor of the motion that we reduce the school budget by a figure of $100,000, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
Vote is five to one.
Can you see a show of hands on that?
Okay, sure, hang on. All those in favor of...
In favor of reducing it by $100,000.
Is this $100,000 going to be used for the sheriff's department? Is that the idea or is it, you're just taking $100,000 away from them? Is that the idea, or is it, you're just taking a hundred thousand dollars away from them?
We've got, we're just taking it away because we don't know how they're spending.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Motion is five to one, one Commissioner absent. All right, moving on, what else we got?
I'd like to discuss some of these other options here. The hundred and twenty thousand in economic development, what is that?
There's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the, in their budget to begin purchase of the Lee County Industrial Park. That would be the first year's payment of principal and interest on purchasing that property. And I think so far, the consensus has been that we don't want to get into the real estate ownership business, is what I've heard from those Commissioners.
So if we eliminate that, that would give us the money to fund the new deputies. But I'll make that motion, where we not purchase the property for a hundred and twenty thousand and put that money towards two new deputies.
Was this discussed in your committee meeting, Mr. Reeves?
Uh, yes, sir.
Did you take a vote?
Yes, sir. And it came back, only Ms. Shook favored it, two against it. So the motion failed.
Failed.
For this, for this funds.
And that's why it's important that that vote be taken by this full board on the Sheriff's Deputies.
We're not voting on the Sheriff's Deputies, we're voting to take that money away from the economic development.
But I think your motion was...
To put it to the Sheriff's Department.
All right, the motion is that we take the money, so stated, from the economic development budget and apply it to the Sheriff's Department for the purpose of hiring two new deputies. All those in favor, say aye.
Well, you can have any discussion.
Oh, yeah, you can have some discussion. I thought we'd already discussed it. Go ahead.
I make one.
Go ahead, I recognize it.
Oh, if your, if your motion is to use a hundred and twenty thousand from economic development, which would actually go back to the fund balance, if you're going to use that to try and hire people, that is not the way we ought to do business, nor have we done business like that in the past. And, and more specifically, I can appreciate the need for more law enforcement. But we've already covered that ground with the Sheriff and with his chief deputy. And we arrived at what he and his chief deputy and the manager agreed to be an acceptable hire. And that is, two grant positions, one jailer, and the two dispatchers. And that's what he agreed to, that's what he stood in here and agreed to. And what I'm hearing from Commissioner Shook is what she feels he needs at this point in time. He's had every opportunity to stress those very same points. He could have very easily selected two deputies as opposed to two dispatchers, or one, or none jailers. So the opportunity for him to increase his deputies has always been available to him, always been available.
Well, I think there may be a perception and conversations that took place, too. I think the Sheriff has always said that he's asked for what he's needed. And I think sometimes there's a play of words, and, you know, when you're the highest elected official in the county, you know, he, maybe he's not a political person, he just doesn't get into politics. He knows what he wants and he asks for it. And my conversations with Tracy were a little bit different. He said he asked for what he needed, and I think he told you, when you had that conversation on June 5th, that maybe, you know, he was thinking that that was all he was going to get, but he asked for...
He was told that's all we could afford.
Well, see, that's a little bit different than him not, than him saying, okay, I won't take the deputies.
He was, he was, you know, at this point, I feel I need to defend what my recommendation was. And I had two meetings with the Sheriff on his budget. Ms. Minter was involved with that with me, and I asked him to prioritize his employees. The reason being is, my original instructions to the department heads was that we were going to have difficulty funding new positions in this year's budget. You know, if all the things I recommended in the budget, the nine new positions in the budget were the things I had the most heartburn over, because when you're adding new employees, you're adding a continual, ongoing cost to the budget. So I asked the Sheriff to prioritize his needs, and that was what he gave me. And actually, the first time he gave it to me, it was flip-flopped. He needed the two jailers and one dispatcher, and the deputies were never discussed until later. Now, I want to remind the board, you approved two deputies from last year, plus a crime scene investigator. And now this year, we're recommending five new employees. That's eight new employees when I've told the other departments that we had to hold head count. So just from a standpoint of head count, you know, you're getting ready to, if we approve these two deputy positions, you're going to approve seven of the ten he requested. And that's a pretty big jump in head count for the county, especially at a time...
And coming forward, I have no problem with that, it's a matter of priorities. Public safety is number one.
Well, if his priorities are the deputies now, then fund the deputies and not fund the other positions.
He needs them all.
Well, I have other department heads that need them, or two.
They don't work twenty-four seven, and they don't have...
I have two right here that ask for employees that are twenty-four seven, that I did not approve.
And when there's a domestic violence case and they have to send two patrol officers out, heaven forbid if somebody else might be on vacation or whatever, and another call comes in and we don't have enough deputy to send out. This is a matter of priorities and public safety, and when you take a look at some of the other things that don't benefit the citizens of Lee County as much as having a fully staffed Sheriff's Department would be, there's just something really wrong with that.
What's wrong is that it sounds more like you trying to run the Sheriff's Department than the Sheriff's trying to run it. And I appreciate him not making it political, but you certainly seem to be...
Because I'm hearing from my constituents.
You're not the only district in the county. The entire county suffers from crime, and you can't hire enough people to rule out crime.
The people in my district pay plenty of taxes, and they feel like they're not getting the government's...
So you think other districts don't pay taxes? You think the people don't pay taxes? You think other people in this county don't pay taxes because you live in one district?
They're saying they're not getting the value of the government services for the high taxes they pay. They want more public safety.
No, you want it.
We're not going to have a debate on who pays taxes or who don't, because we all pay them. The item for discussion right now is, is whether we're going to accept the motion or not.
The motion is to use money that comes from the fund balance to hire people, which is wrong on its face.
And I would like to point out also that the two grant positions are going to cost us. We have to fund their fringe benefits, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Manager.
Plus, we have to...
So we are putting money into the two that are grant positions.
And after the grant runs out, we're then faced with having to hire them or let them go. And it certainly would make sense to train them and then let them go unless they're just bad employees, and if they're bad, they shouldn't be on there anymore.
It's a matter of priorities. If it has to come out of the fund balance, it has to come out of the fund balance.
No, that's not necessary.
I'd like to call the question.
All right, does anybody remember what the motion was? What is it, Madam Clerk?
To eliminate a hundred and twenty thousand dollars from EDC and put toward two new deputies.
All right, she called the question. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Two vote against. All those in favor, raise your hand.
Two votes for.
I mean, two for. Those who are against, raise your hand. Four to two, the motion fails, and one Commissioner absent. Okay. Anything else about the budget?
I'd like to request that we pull the fourteen thousand from Johnson Lee Harnett Duty Action out.
What are you going to do with that?
Put it in the general fund.
General fund, that is coming out to general fund, yes.
We need to put it back. That, it's a worthy project, but it doesn't benefit that many citizens from Lee County. And it comes down to a matter of, should Lee County taxpayers be funding a three-county operation?
It does not fund a three-county operation. It funds the people that is in need in this county. Each county puts money into their own respective program in that county.
Well, taxpayers have enough going in the departments, social services, human services, and others for those in need in our counties. So I'm saying this is something that needs to come out. I make that motion.
I'll say this, Ms. Shook, unless you've been out to see a lot of the projects that helps these elderly people, disabled people, and things of this nature, in their home or what have you, so far as weatherization, insulation, and things like this, to be warmer during the winter months, or helping cool their home in the summer months. And you know what kind of toll that can take on an elderly person.
That's where church groups...
That's the kind of programs I like to see in the county, helping as many people as they can.
I think they ought to be in the county also. I just question that they should, that Lee County taxpayers should fund it. We have lots of civic groups, church groups, other groups, you know. I think that it would be interesting to see if in November, when you put all these items that we're spending on the referendum, let the voters decide how they want to spend the money, we may find that it's a little different than how this board wants to spend this money.
All right, the motion is on the floor to eliminate the fourteen thousand dollars from Johnson Lee Community Action. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Motion is five to one, it's defeated, and one Commissioner absent. All right, anything else concerning the budget from any Commissioner? Mr. Crumpson?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll move on to the next item of business, and I'll recognize Mr. Crumpson handling this.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We are now in a position where we have received approval from the Community College and the Board of Education to inspect their facilities. We had three firms, individuals contact me regarding doing various things with our capital projects. Most were interested in actually trying to take a look at the Jimmy Hyde Plan and trying to find cost cuts there, and that's not what we're doing here. We're actually just trying to do a health and safety inspection and make sure that the facility is safe for attendance. And after a lot of discussion, I felt that a local person here, Mr. Ray Martin, acting as an individual with expertise in construction management and plan design, would be an excellent choice for the board to hire, to lead a team of county employees and also some other folks that have shown interest in going through the schools, maybe some of the Commissioners, and doing an evaluation of the, of each school. So in my discussions with Mr. Martin, we think it's best that he be hired as an employee, temporary employee for the county, and we discussed a weekly salary of two thousand dollars. So obviously, these assessments, we'd like to have done before the end of the summer, so this would be a not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. Be happy to answer any questions.
An employee or a contractor?
He would be hired as an employee, paid like an employee, but would act as a consultant to the board.
No fringes.
No fringes, since it's a temporary part-time position.
Mr. Martin is with us today, seated in the back. You want to stand up, Mr. Martin, so they can see who you are?
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
How long do you think this may be, is it four, ten weeks?
Well, I hope it doesn't take ten weeks, but I'm, you know, I'm asking for that amount to, you know, to make sure it covers that a point. If it takes ten weeks, kids will be back in school, so I'm hoping it will take less.
Right, because if we recognize some problems that need immediate attention, then we need to immediately fix them.
We'll have, if, I think that's one of the things we have to be careful over stepping here is, is, you know, they've allowed us to do the assessment. If we identify anything that's a serious safety issue, it's our obligation to report it to either the Community College or to the Board of Education. And then hopefully, we'd end up in a dialogue on how to fix those problems. So, you know, because it's, you know, the way things stand, it's still the Board of Education's responsibility to repair and fix the buildings. We give them the money, but it's their job to do it.
Well, do we not have already employed people that can do this inspection, say the count of twenty thousand?
We do have employees that can do certain aspects of the inspection, you know, from fire inspection, building inspection, environmental health. But, you know, there are other engineering-type things that we would want to take a look at right now from a roof standpoint, to name one particular item that's been complaining to us about roof leakings, that kind of stuff, where we'd need a little bit higher expertise, and Mr. Martin brings that to us.
Drainage problems.
And the drainage problems.
Will you negotiate a lower fee just to look at those problems?
Well, he's sitting at sea, no more than...
If you authorize me to negotiate, then I'll negotiate. But I did think this was the most cost-effective way to do it, based on the other discussions I had with, you know, the Construction Control Group and Mullins Sherman Architects. Now, if you want to get more in depth, you know, we may have to hire somebody like that if we find something significantly structurally wrong with a building that they plan on continuing to use.
Mr. Crumpson has made a recommendation that we proceed with Mr. Martin and that the project at this point not exceed twenty thousand dollars, for your motion.
I was...
Motion been made, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
Vote is five to one, it passes, and one Commissioner absent. Anything else, Mr. Crumpson?
Going back to the budget, we're meeting next Monday. And when we meet next Monday, I'm going to take what was, you know, in the minutes tonight and propose the budget ordinance. So I'm assuming that there are no other discussions and that we're good to go to print, even though I've heard at one time, there was a majority that didn't want to spend, you know, a hundred and twenty thousand on the property. As the motions stand right now, a hundred and twenty thousand is still in there. So...
The majority want to put that, buy that property and put the money back in the...
No. The motion was to hire the deputies.
I would like to go back to the general fund.
Okay, motion been made, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion that the hundred and twenty thousand be placed in the general fund, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Six in favor and one Commissioner absent. All right, that completes everything on our agenda. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. And I would remind you...
Five o'clock, Hayden.
What's that?
Is it five thirty?
Five thirty, sorry. Same time, next month, same...
Same bad station.
Thank you.